Okay, welcome to the September 8th, 2025 Board of Selectmen meeting. I'm reminded this meeting is being broadcast and recorded. And I do believe that most recordings are available on 1623 Studios on YouTube by the end of the week or early next week. And so we have five minutes. Do we want to have the...
You want to do a couple of the simple things on other business?
Sure. Where would you like to go?
The weekly warrant?
Okay. I have a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of 198,435,046 cents.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain. Approve the minutes for the August 18th open meeting.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I move to approve or ratify the approval of this... I move to ratify the approval of last week's warrant in the amount of 201,512,064 cents and further to exempt Section 20 of Chapter 268a of the general laws, the contracts and amounts for individuals listed below contained within the warrant pursuant to the subsection D of said section.
825-25. So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll give this back to you. Okay. Vote to accept the gift amount of $2,026 from the Canomo Point Association to the Harbor Gift Fund.
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? No. All those in favor?
Aye.
The next one, she'll need more time for that.
Okay.
You could probably get, do the interim loan note.
Okay, next on the other business agenda, there's a signed interim loan note, documents provided by the treasure collector concerning the town's borrowing for the community septic management loan programs.
Yes, and I'll recommend a motion that the board move the vote that has been recommended by bond counsel for this borrowing that will be attached to the minutes of the meeting as well.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pam, do you have, do you have those documents or do they already circulate?
They're, they're here.
Yeah, okay.
I think Alva has to sign.
You have to sign the selectmen's vote.
And then the rest we do.
I think I got them all signed in this.
Okay, it's 6:04, so I'm, Ken, I'm going to invite you up. Please, anybody, if you could please do the sign up and put your name, just so we make sure we have everybody's name for our minutes.
Thank you. Ken Reel, Two Island Road, and I'd like to introduce Ron Parker here from the Manchester Essex Rotary Club. We're, we're both here on behalf of the Rotary. And I'm past president of the club for last year. Ron is president-elect, so we're happy to be here tonight talking about an event that will touch Essex as well as Manchester. Just a little bit of background on the club. So the club was formed over 20 years ago, and we meet every single week. And we meet here in Essex at the Essex Schoolhouse right on Main Street across from the Congregational Church. And then we also meet in Manchester, and then we have a dinner meeting, and we alternate between Manchester and Essex for our dinner meetings. And we've had several of you to our meetings as guest speakers, and we're looking forward to having you back. The, our, our basic tenet is to support the community. So our motto is service above self, and we collectively give several hundred hours of service to both communities with our, our small but mighty membership. We're about 40 members of the club. And the other thing that we do is we give a lot of money away. So we raise money to give money away. And last year, we gave away a record $50,000 to both communities, including $15,000 to the schools, and we're very proud of that. So to do that, it means that we do a lot of fundraising, and we have a lot of events. We have a golf tournament coming up in a week. Love to have you guys there. But we're talking about another event that both serves our mission, which is to get the community more involved in getting outside and serving and being in a healthy way, and also as a possible future fundraiser, and that is a biking event, not unlike what, what's coming up at the Cox Reservation, the Green Belt with the Tour de Greenbelt. But ours, ours is going to be very low level because it's our first year, and we want to get into it slowly and just see where that goes. So with that, I'll sign in, and Ron, if you want to talk about the event a little bit.
Ken, can you tell me what causes you've donated funding to besides the schools in both towns?
I'm so pleased you asked. Because I was going to mention, Peter, so one of the important things that we do is that we try to do a community project every year. So, so most of our funds go to nonprofits. So you pick a nonprofit, and we've donated to it in both communities as well as more regionally, like we're, we regularly serve at the open door, and we donate significantly to the open door and pathways and, and other needy community organizations. But importantly, this past year, we made a large contribution to the Essex Senior Center, and we built, we provided a new gardening shed for them. And so that was a $3,500 contribution from our club that we're very pleased to be able to do.
And the town hall sign out front.
Yep.
Can I also note that Jack Shea is on the Manchester Essex Education Fund and is part of the Rotary? Chris Shea.
Chris Shea.
Sorry, I apologize.
Exactly right.
And you made, you have a very, very generous scholarship for Manchester Essex students, and thank you for what you do because it's a very nice scholarship. It's not a small amount.
Yeah, totally, we, in total, we give away about $15,000 a year through that scholarship. And our scholarships values are, are significant. They're on the order of four to $5,000 per award, and so that, you know, it's really, it's beneficial for the students in need.
And families, yeah.
Yeah. Ron, you want to talk about that?
All right, thanks, Ken. I'm Ron Parker. I'm a Manchester resident. I'm a recreational cyclist, and I'm the next-year president of the Manchester Essex Rotary Club. So as Ken mentioned, we're putting together the cycling event. It has three components to it. We propose Sunday, October 26th with start and finish at Mascanomo Park in Manchester. The first part is for young children. It's just a little bicycle cross within Mascanomo. The second part is an eight-mile hybrid gravel ride that will briefly touch Essex on its way to the Gordon College paths. And then the third component, which you may be more interested in, is a 20-mile road route, and that one will go up through Magnolia Ave and Gloucester to 133, eventually make our way to Canomo Point, which will be our turnaround point we're proposing. We'd like to set up a water station there at that, it's the halfway point, and then we'll return back to Mascanomo via Southern Ave. So that's our proposed event. We do envision it ultimately to be a fundraiser, but if we break even in our first year, we'd be happy.
How many cyclists do you anticipate at this point?
It's, it's very hard to say because we haven't done it yet, but I'd be surprised if we had more than 50 to start.
Is this rain or shine?
Um, yeah, I think we are.
Depends on the level of rain.
Yeah, mostly, because logistics are difficult to move it, obviously, and it is on a Sunday, so it's not like a Saturday with a Sunday secondary.
And a cool rain is not fun to ride in.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, and we struggled with date, trying to fit it in between everything else that's going on ourselves and the community. We originally were thinking even November, but it gets kind of cool for cycling in November. So we've got this October 26th date as our placeholder.
Any other questions? I have no comments. Thank you for providing us the information. Beesie, did you want to mention?
Yeah, so you'll need to apply for a mass highway permit through Pam, and she can tell you about the details there. In addition, have you coordinated with the public safety officials, or will you be doing that?
Yeah, thanks, Brendan. I did, I spoke to Chief Shamshack earlier this week, or I guess it was last week now. And so I think that the chief is satisfied with what we'd like to do. And so, yeah, I think we're, we're in coordination there. And we are doing the same thing, of course, in Manchester, and I've reached out to Chief Fitzgerald as well as EMT.
What time does it start, and how long do you anticipate it to go on for?
Yeah, so nine o'clock is our proposed start time, and 20 miles, probably an hour and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, everybody should be back to Mascanomo by 11:00, I would say.
So I'm going to entertain a motion to approve the Essex, Manchester Essex Rotary Bike Ride on October 26th, Sunday?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
And that can, can that be subject to the granting of the required mass highway permit?
That can be subject to the requirement of the state highway permit. Thank you.
Perfect. Thanks very much.
Okay. Do you want to start your meeting stuff?
Um, sure. First item is a summary of the Affordable Housing Trust meeting that we had. Too many papers.
Don't you hate when you put it in the right place? He can't find it.
So at the Affordable Housing Trust meeting that was held on August 27th, generally, the personnel from MAPC were discussing kind of some of the end preparations for the housing production plan. It involved discussion about some other possible properties in Essex that the trust should keep its eye on in the future because it would be a good opportunity. Those would be good opportunities for affordable housing. Some other properties that didn't seem as important, and those are going to be removed from the list. And then the, the trust went through a number of different strategies that the housing production plan will include, and were in agreement generally with what MAPC had laid out. So soon, there will be a draft of the housing production plan. That's going to be put up on the dedicated website that MAPC maintains for this project. You can get to that from the Essex Affordable Housing Trust webpage on the Essex website. And the selectmen and the planning board will be given a copy of the draft so that it can be reviewed and, at, at probably a preliminary draft stage, and then there'll be another opportunity to review it when it's out for full public review. And so I just wanted to highlight what's going on there. It is moving forward, and there'll be more information for you to review very soon on that one. With respect to email accounts for the fire department, the board may recall that we were set up to potentially upgrade the Microsoft 365 license for each one of our users so that it could include all of the on-premises software programs for download. We then learned that Microsoft is going to continue to allow us to just simply buy a copy of the on-premises software, which we've done, and now we've upgraded to the 2024 package. Since we're not going to have to pay extra for the user licenses, the fire department is interested in expanding the number of licenses for, I'm sorry, the number of users that have email, town email within the fire department. And before I just went ahead with that, I wanted to make sure the board was okay with going in that direction. It's the same account, line item account, that we would pay for whether it's more users at, at the basic level or upgrading the level of license. But when the budget was actually taken to town, meeting and discussed with the finance committee, we were talking about the upgrade. So if you're okay with it, then I would like to go to the finance committee so that they're aware of the fact that it, it could be spent a little bit differently than what was originally requested. Now, also bear in mind that there was going to be an application for a grant that would have defrayed part of it, so it's not like we had all the money for it anyway. The money that we did get put in, which would be the local remainder that, above and beyond the grant, is the money we're talking about. It's about $4,500, I think.
Who were the additional email accounts? Were these volunteer firefighters or?
Yes, yes. So the chief first wants to expand it to all the officers and people that are in certain roles, but then there's a potential to expand it beyond that for good communication within the fire department.
Makes sense.
So it's, it's something that we could consider, but I don't want to do it unless the board is on board with it.
So do you want us to make a motion?
No, no, it's okay. As long as you know about it, and I, I'm going to check with the finance committee. We plan to move forward unless there's some objection.
Wonderful.
Sounds good.
Next is an update on the fuel depot construction project. We were out there today at 1:00. We did the final layout with the contractor and the engineer on the fuel depot pad. We are now told that they will probably break ground around the second week of October. They could come in now and break ground, but they want to actually do the pad in close proximity to when the tank and equipment will be shipped. They don't want to have too much of a lull in between, and we expect that the project will be done and operational just before Thanksgiving. So the fuel depot could be used this year during the winter snow removal season.
So I'm assuming that there won't be any construction while the transfer station is open for the public, or will there be? Because it's kind of tight there.
There, well, there will have to be because it's not going to be all done on a weekend or it, it's not limited to, yeah, but they're not limited to, to those days. First of all, the, the donation bins are going to have to be moved anyway, and that's the reason why most people go into that area.
Yeah.
So I think they'll find a way to, to get it out, get it out of, out of harm's way, yeah.
Recyclers, yeah.
Was anybody from the DPW there to say where they're going to move them to?
Uh, no, I wasn't told where they're going to put them as yet. The DPW foreman was there, but not the superintendent.
Okay.
I just know that they're going to move those, and they're going to move the electronics shed somewhere else.
It's just coming up. October's really quick, I mean, so that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, yeah, they've been in the loop, though. I'm not sure what they're going to do. With respect to the next item, it is the successor third-party ambulance billing contract. We use ComStar, we have for a number of years on an annual basis. They determine after an ambulance run is completed how to bill the patient's insurance. They handle all of that, and the funds go into the ambulance fund, and they receive 7% of all collections. And the recommendation is, again, this year, to go with ComStar for a one-year period.
This means I entertain a motion now, right?
Yep.
All right, so I'm going to entertain a motion for the third-party ambulance billing contract with ComStar for one year?
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I want to see where that, that is. I'll find it for you so you can have, so you can sign it. Uh, let's see, so looking at the time.
Yeah.
So, yeah, you probably don't want to get into the warrant right now. The, I can update you on the dumpster and public access license from the shipyard. I've been told now by the attorney for that establishment that they are in agreement, but they haven't quite gotten around to signing the document yet, so I'll bring it back again at the next meeting.
Okay.
Mass DOT has a new grant program called the Local Early Stage Actionable Planning, or LEAP Grant. This is a way to continue the momentum that we started with looking at future solutions for the causeway. You may recall, we had gone through quite a bit of effort with Mass DOT and their consulting engineering firm to develop a federal protect grant, but then at the last minute, the federal government decided that, at least for now, they're not offering that grant. The LEAP Grant, I believe, is only going to give a grant for up to $100,000 as opposed to the $3 million that we were looking for under protect, but it would be the next step from the MPO, the Boston Metropolitan Planning Organization study that was done on the causeway as a starting point. This would be the intermediate point, hopefully, to a federal grant that either is newly minted or rejuvenated.
Gets us in the pipeline.
Yeah, and so for maybe $100,000, what happens here is if you're selected, Mass DOT comes up with a scope that will help you, and then they give you that much money for their own engineering firm to help you with the study. And, you know, I noticed that was available. I spoke to the DOT project manager that was helping us with protect. He's also involved with LEAP, and he said he thinks it's a good candidate, and so I'm recommending that the board authorize the application.
So we're, we're eligible, I think everybody's eligible, but the focus is on rural and gateway communities? Do we meet?
Well, we meet rural.
Yeah.
Not gateway.
Yeah.
But I did speak to him about, you know, our eligibility, and he said, you're, you're in a good situation and that you should apply.
Yeah.
And so is this authorizing you to move forward with applying?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to entertain a motion to authorize Brendan Zbicki, Town Administrator, to move forward with the Mass dot local early-stage actionable planning, L-E-A-P, program request and take form.
So moved.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I can mention that the MOU for regional sheltering is probably going to take another meeting cycle. They have not presented it yet.
This is Gordon College?
Yes.
So we got, um, Annie, do you want to do your thing regarding?
Sure, and I'll get it done in six minutes. Just wanted to update you on the school building committee process and Essex Elementary. So we were in the designer selection phase. We started with three firms, J C J, which is the firm that designed the Memorial School, La Valley, Brenzinger, and Mary Ann Thompson were the three firms that came forward and presented proposals. When we evaluated them, J C J came up to the top. La Valley and J C J both had MSBA experience, but Mary Ann Thompson did not. She was very heavily into design. She's a beautiful designs, but doesn't know the MSBA process, and so that was, we felt was a weakness. They went to the designer selection committee, and La Valley, Brenzinger pulled out, said they didn't want to go to the interview phase. So Mary Ann Thompson and J C J ended up at the table, and it was clear in the interviews that that firm had no MSBA experience, so we went with J C J. At the last meeting, J C J kind of reviewed an amended presentation that they had shown the designer panel. It's available on the M E R S D website, so if you go there, there's a school Essex Elementary site. They drew up some possible sighting ideas based on our options, which are ad renault, in addition to the Manchester Memorial School building, a new building. They also showed some phasing options and some design ideas that were inspired by Essex architecture. Again, these are all just ideas.
What was the first one?
Ad renault. You have to, the MSB requires that you do three different, ad renault and new building and...
Something else.
Yeah, but here's the other thing. We threw in a couple of extra factors, which are adding on to Manchester Memorial.
Yep.
That was requested, I think, by some finance committee members, maybe in both towns. And then looking at Apple Street. So all of these, these things are part of the feasibility study, and all require thorough examination. So we did talk about that, made sure that everyone knew, like, we have to really make this very thorough. They proposed a timeline. The two ti, I think the two towns should look at that timeline, and we should come to some agreement as to when we go forward with the vote. They proposed fall of 2026. That made me a little nervous, but again, we have to be strategic. They outlined the preliminary design program, and there are two meetings, the 15th and the 30th of this month, that are successive meetings, and then they're planning on a community meeting for both towns in Essex in October. So things are moving on at a steady clip, but please go and look at the website and get informed about what's happening. It's very exciting.
So I did go to the website. I didn't read in detail, but I was looking for that form that we had, almost like a timeline, so that here's what we have to do. I couldn't find that. I couldn't, I didn't find it. So if you can look for that this week?
I'm going to just send you the slide deck because it's on there.
Okay.
Oh, you're looking, are you looking for the Gantt chart? Like, remember that Gantt chart we used to have?
Yeah, no, I was just looking for the whole process. You got to do this, you got to do this, so that people, you know, I don't know how involved everybody from Essex was with the other two buildings, but it was helpful to understand.
If you look in the minutes from the last meeting, J C J's timeline is embedded in that, so it'll give you a timeline there, but I'll make sure that you have it, okay?
Are the folks from Weston and Sampson here?
We are.
Ah, come on up with their laptop.
Thank you, Annie. And I was, one of the things that I did say is, you know, just to mention where we would find.
Pardon?
Where we would find, so it's on the...
Yeah, how about if I send you the presentation from J C J and then a link to the URL to the site, and we can probably throw it on our, what is our, what, the town website?
Yeah, thank you.
Good idea. Thank you.
Okay, we're just setting up for a 6:30 call.
So is this presentation on the fence removal or on the restoration of the tennis courts itself? Because both are...
This is on the project plan, correct?
Yeah. So...
Because both are renovations.
Right. So this is simply on the money that was, the money that was donated by the nonprofit is funding the design of renovating the courts where they sit today. The board may consider, and the town meeting may consider, additional money at the fall town meeting for taking down the fencing in the, in the meantime, but that is not the subject of tonight's presentation. It looks like it is up, so ready to go.
Okay. Is this on? Yes, I think we're on. Slightly louder. Good evening. My name's Brandon Conkel. I'm the practice leader for the design program here at Weston and Sampson. It's great to be here. I have my colleague Lynn Yee. She's going to be serving as my Vanna White this evening and pushing the slide deck forward. This should be a relatively quick updated, update presentation for you folks, and where we're at in the process, and then ultimately where we plan to be in a few months here. So, next slide. So we've gone out since being awarded the contract, and as it was noted earlier, through a donation of funding to pay for this effort. We went out and did a site analysis. We evaluated the pavement. We evaluated the fencing. We looked at the local drainage and, you know, to identify where there might be deficiencies as well as areas just beyond the court itself. I do want to note, and it may be obvious if you're in this world of engineering and design and environmental resource, the court does, existing court, which is located right outside the window here, does abut wetlands immediately or salt marsh... the window here, does abut wetlands immediately, or salt marsh in particular. And so you can see here, in the solid red line, the limits of the salt marsh, there's environmental setbacks and buffers, whereas also within a 200-foot riverfront zone, which encapsulates the entire court area. So I say all that with, no matter what, we're going to have to go through a permitting process. And what that really includes is a submission to the local conservation commission, as well as the state Mass DEP. But we expect it to be fairly smooth, given the fact that these are existing courts, it's an existing condition, and we'll talk a little bit about the limits and size of the existing courts versus what's being proposed. I do wanna note that these are just schematic plans at this point, but we will carry them through final construction drawings. So next slide. This is the analysis that we did. We had a surveyor go out and not only map the environmental restrictions and setbacks, but also the grading and topography. And if you've ever gone out there after a rain event, you'll note that the lower corner, lower-left corner of the tennis courts, highlighted here in blue, tend to always be full of water. The water runs down both the gravel drive and the court itself, and at one time, if you are aware, this used to actually be flooded for a skating rink, so there's a curb around it that actually holds the water in. So the intent is to actually lift the court up in order to alleviate flooding, as well as all-new pavement and all-new fencing, as well as meeting current tennis association guidelines. So, next slide. This is just a concept plan again, noting that the current court is slightly too small from current standards, so we will be expanding the court by about approximately four feet. That is adding impervious area within environmental resource. We know that. We'll be compensating through permeable pavement, as well as using what we call California corners, or it eliminates the zed zones in the corner, so it's an angled fence in the corner, but it also allows for gates to be added without impeding on actual play. So these will be regulation-sized courts with all the proper setbacks and upgraded fencing throughout, gates, new benches that can be shared by both courts in the middle, as well as service gates in order for town maintenance or operations to be able to get in and service the courts at a high level. So with that, we'll jump to the next slide. Here's just a close-up showing some of the dimensions that we planned. So it'll be approximately 120 by 120. We're still working through some of these dimensions. A regulation court is 60 by 120, including all the setbacks. We will be infringing slightly upon the gravel drive in order to make the dimensions work, but we will maintain fire access and emergency access, as well as the ability to have two-way traffic with the final court design. Next slide. Here's our schedule. Here's where we are right now, so we've, and you guys are the star in the middle of the slide. We have gone out and had the survey done. We've been working with the committee to come up with the conceptual designs, which you just saw. We'll be presenting a meeting with them shortly after this meeting, and then we're gonna immediately jump into getting permit plans ready. We hope to be permitting by the beginning of October, and then, once we get through permitting, we'll wrap up construction documents and do a engineer's estimate in order to present to the town, so that they can determine whether, at that time, they wanna present to that town meeting, or what the next steps might be. So that's where we're at today. Again, it's a fairly straightforward project. We don't believe there will be any issues with the timeline in regards to town meeting and the next steps following thereafter. As it was noted in the transition and start of this presentation, there's potential for some early action items, but that's to be determined at this point in time. Any questions?
So, to point out for the board, can you comment on how the design will minimize excavation down into the ground? We know when, when we took the old fire station out, when we, when we did the sewer line by the old fire station, we encountered some contamination in the subsurface.
Sure. So the intent is to peel up the existing pavement, or potentially mill it in place, and leave it in place, and use it as new subgrade. As I mentioned, we're gonna be building up, we're gonna be raising the courts up probably around six to eight inches, depending on the final grading, in order to alleviate puddling that occurs now. So the intent is to do all work above the existing grade. We have a few tricks up our sleeve where we can detail fencing, so that the posts aren't going too far into the grade. We are very sensitive to soil conditions below, but we also have to be sensitive to the fact that we are working within environmental resource areas and flood plains and all the, you know, flood capacities and taking away due to filling. So it's a tight balance, but the intent is to build above the existing grade and not actually do any excavation.
And can you also comment on the design of the courts themselves with respect to how to minimize future settling in this area?
Yep, so part of the next phase will be working within budgets, of course, but determining whether or not it makes more sense to stick with traditional asphalt, or going with a more modern court system of post-tension concrete, which is a structural slab of concrete, and it's reinforced with wire that allows it to move up and down as a single pad. It doesn't necessarily eliminate, but highly reduces the, the long-term effects of cracking and settling versus asphalt pavement. That's not to say asphalt pavement's not a good choice for playing surface. It's still completely appropriate, it's just a different cost point, but it doesn't necessarily affect the level of play either.
How will the expansion of the four feet affect the existing conditions permitting?
So that we're gonna offset it, or at least make the argument to offset it, that we're using permeable pavement within that four feet, so that we can indicate, while we are adding area, we're not necessarily increasing the impervious area.
Okay. And that's worked in the past?
It has.
Yeah.
Now, at this point, this is what the project plan, but we don't have funding yet, correct?
There's no funding. This project is only for design and permitting through construction documents. If this were to move forward, either with a grant or with a grant and town money combined, there would have to be an additional scope of services to carry the engineering during construction, and of course, money to carry the actual payments to the contractor. So that would be in the future.
And I'm just wondering, as far as the permitting, so you could do a permitting in October, but say we don't get funding until a year from May, or a year from, I mean, next November. What happens with that permitting? Is it still good?
Permits are typically order conditions with the state, is good for about three years from the time of issuance.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Brendan, we had, before we go any further, we have, as you can see, we have a very safe room in here tonight.
Yes.
Do we, I was wondering if we wanted to move to the, the fire department items that are on the other business?
Sure. So the board has on its agenda an item with respect to a resident that wrote the board concerning the possibility of going from an in-house BLS ambulance service to perhaps something that was privatized, and that service would be BLS and ALS combined. The board also has an agenda item that's talking about what other communities in the area have done. For example, Rockport has hired Bowport for their all ambulance services, and that's at a cost of about $4,700 a week, whereas Marblehead and Swampscott have used the same company to have a contract where all the ambulance calls will be covered at no cost. I would imagine that the difference is that Bowport understands the call volume in Swampscott, Marblehead, and is able to commit to no cost there because there'll be more activity, et cetera. And we haven't asked them the difference between the two. And so that question came forward, especially in light of how the chief had laid out the five-year plan, and the fire department is talking about additional staffing. I think it's important to understand, and I learned recently, that when the ambulance is called upon, usually there is a fire truck, another unit rolls at the same time. And that's because frequently at calls, there is a need for additional physical assistance to get a patient from wherever they are, down across a property and into an ambulance. So that's a common feature, and so the notion, I just wanted to say this, the notion of privatizing the ambulance service wouldn't necessarily mean that the Essex Fire Department would not be going out on the ambulance call. They likely still will be. And so that's important to understand. It's also important to understand that at this point in time, and I'll let the chief speak to these items in more detail, at this point in time, the fire department is envisioning bringing on a full-time administrative person, not necessarily a person that is there to replace people that are running the ambulance, because there's such an administrative burden. I think he'll elaborate on that. So chief, maybe you can help the selectmen with some of those things.
Good evening. So yeah, I think you bring up a lot of good points, and I know there's been email correspondence back and forth, which has been very helpful. From a privatization standpoint, I think, you know, with anything, there should be some sort of vision and kind of goal for the system, and I don't know what, what you guys had in mind for that, as far as that goes. But our current system works very well. We have a pretty impressive on-time performance, given that we are a call-based, and even without being call-based. We average under six minutes for a response time, according to the data that I pulled over from kind of year-to-date, so January till now. And I think it's, should be fairly obvious, just looking back there, that the department cares about doing this. This is a service that is provided by and large by local people who care about giving care to the residents. We talk about why we run extra people. You know, part of it is the extrication piece, right? We have, we went to a house the other day that was definitely not new construction, and it was four to six people to get someone out, just because of the way the houses are set up. And that's standard across EMS. I've been in EMS for 15-plus years on the private side. I've worked in communities from Boston to the North Shore, and it's the same. It's always police, fire, EMS respond to these things for, whether it be safety concerns, or extrication concerns, or weather concerns. When we get a call in the middle of the winter, I will all but guarantee, you're gonna see either a woodman or a crocker showing up with their plow. We don't ask for them. They just show up, and that's what this town gets for service when they're running their private ambulance service. I think another big point to think about, as we're considering this, is we run 500 to 600 calls a year, of which probably 50 to 60% are medical calls. So you disenfranchise the department a little bit, and you really take away opportunities for development of skills and continued refreshing of skills. If you don't use something, it gets very stagnant, right? So our going on ambulance calls keeps people engaged, and it's, by and large, a very much a positive to the department. And then there's the cost. So we bring in revenue every year. Like Mr. Zabricki said, a lot of the cost doesn't go away, right? You're still sending fire on calls. You still have to staff, or you still have to staff during the week to cover those calls. You still have equipment that you need to buy, albeit not an ambulance, but you still have the year-to-year maintenance of your medical equipment that expires constantly. So the real cost savings would be in the ambulance purchase, I suppose. But again, on the flip side, you're not generating any revenue, so I think that's important to recognize. And finally, we've been in the ambulance business or game for quite some time. Dan can speak to that better than I can, but it's not something that you flip a switch and say, "Hey, we're not doing this anymore," and then say, "Oops, we actually wanna do it again," and then flip another switch and have the ambulance come back. There's, there's licenses that go along with it. There's a lot to it, so, a lot to consider. And then, finally, I will say that we control our own destiny with the ambulance being in-house. If we go to a private ambulance service, we are a small fish in a big pond, and the likelihood of them coming into Essex and doing a free service is almost nonexistent, I would say. And for it to be sustainable. We have two ambulances backed into the, into the garage right now, into the fire department right now, and we've, multiple times this year, had instances where we've used both A1 and A2, because we've had back-to-back calls. We had a Friday or so that we did, I think, 11 calls in a 24-hour period, so we do get busy, and we do handle it. So I think it would just be a sad day to see it go away.
Annie, I see you have a question.
Yeah, I have a few. So, just wanna kind of chunk things into their chunks, right? So ambulance is one area, right, we're talking about. You had an opportunity that kind of arose, and you investigated it. And, so I guess, I just, there is no problem we need to solve with ambulance. This was basically an opportunity that you had seen, and we're entertaining it. So from what you're saying is, there really isn't a problem that we need to solve, it's just a different way of providing the service.
Yeah, and I would follow that up with, I don't begrudge anyone for trying to find a more fiscally responsible way to do things.
We always wanna do that, right?
Of course. And I support that fully, and I think fire, over the years, has shown that they're a partner with that, and we will continue to be a partner with that, so.
So, so in terms of this, you know, I think you and I had a conversation about response times, and I would love to see the data that you have, but also Rockport's data, 'cause I think we talked a little bit about where their ambulance was supposed to be positioned, and it wasn't necessarily positioned in that same place, and so it may have an impact on that response time and kind of the, maybe the promise and the delivery of that promise.
Yeah, so that, that's not something I can produce necessarily. I can ask Bowport Ambulance, who's the provider, to provide that, but I have no skin in that game, right?
Yeah.
So you, as the board, in a, in a research function, certainly can reach out to them as well.
And then the cost issue is, right now, it's revenue neutri, or actually, we're bringing in revenue, and we're taking that money and we're putting it towards...
Ambulance only.
Ambulance purchase, hardware, right? The fiscal...
And salaries, correct?
$50,000 a year from the ambulance fund is spent on the actual operational costs of the ambulance service, and then the rest... of the ambulance service, and then the rest of the money, because they take in more than that accrues, and then when they need a new ambulance, it's purchased in cash. And I think it's important to point out, you know, as Selectman Cameron said, this was an exploratory thing, because everyone's looking at the future, and what are all the other options? You're starting to hear from other towns that they're going to privatization. In our case, I think it's clear that since you still have to roll other equipment that right now is covered by the money coming from the ambulance fund, if you had to do that, even though the private service, maybe if magically we get a contract where they weren't going to charge us, which I think would be difficult, but let's say we even had that, we now would not have the revenue being raised to help defray the cost of that other equipment that's essentially going out as part of a medical call, an ambulance call. And so we would actually be behind.
So wait a minute, you don't think we'd get the Marblehead deal? We would get more of a Rockport deal?
I think you're looking at two end members, yeah.
Yeah, so those contracts are based on call volume, pair mix. So if they can evaluate to the best of their ability and say, hey, you've got low Medicare, low mass health, and high volume, you're a great contract. That's what they're looking for. The 250-ish, 300 calls that we're doing here is not going to pay for the, offset the cost of an ALS. Even a shared resource would be challenging, so.
So the insurance is covering all the costs of the ambulance at this point?
Yes.
So if, and not saying we go into, but if we went to an outsourcing, would we still pay ComStar? Or would that be the ambulance company that pays ComStar?
Correct. ComStar gets a 7% of our billables, right? So if we're not billing anything, we're not paying them anything.
Right, so, yeah, the ambulance company probably uses their own, or that has an in-house team, I don't know.
Correct.
And they, you know, they get the money, as much of it as they can, of course, because that's profitability. I think this came up because we're talking about potential new staffing in the fire department for a number of reasons, and the idea came up, well, if you didn't have to deal with the cost of medicals, because that's the majority of the calls, then perhaps there'd be something good to look at there. But the more we look at it, the more I think pitfalls we're starting to see. It's just that, so.
And obviously, I agree.
So can I just ask one follow-up question about the coming cuts to Medicare? Have we done any projections on the impact of that on ambulance reimbursement?
Or have you even heard anything? Because I
Yeah, I'm just wondering if that
It could, I mean, certainly if everything goes through as planned, it could have a negative effect, because if all of a sudden, in Massachusetts, we're a little insulated, where there is a requirement to have insurance, and then there's the mass health system. So I can't speculate on what that would look like as far as people on Medicare switching to mass health, or where that goes, but it would, certainly, there's going to be a time of flux there, probably where there could be uncovered people, uninsured folks, and that could be challenging.
Yeah, I'm wondering if anybody's doing any modeling, you know?
As to what changes in the insurance industry?
Yeah, in two years, I mean, it's two years out, right? So, I mean, we don't have to make any decisions tonight, right?
No, this was just kind of tangential to studying the whole thing, and I think it's good to have this conversation, because it's happening in a lot of towns around us, and people are going to have the question, well, what would this look like in Essex? In Essex, it looks like something different than perhaps in another community.
Yeah, and you definitely have communities around you going the other direction as well that are using privates, that are looking to go and stand up a fire-based ambulance service. I think, just again, quality control, in-house, being able to kind of control your own destiny. And at the end of the day, we do, like you said, there's no problem here, right? We're doing a pretty good job of response times. We have work to do on kind of tweaking things a little bit and getting our heads above water in some areas, but by and large, we have a tremendously committed group, and I think there's a lot of value, and we're doing it pretty economically. So when you think about a private ambulance service, they're paying for that ambulance 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They're paying to have that staffed, right? We're paying for eight hours, seven days a week, and then we're an on-call, so we're only sending people out when there's revenue to be had, essentially. So it's a much better model.
Have any of the private ambulance companies submitted a proposal to Essex as to what it would look like here?
No, but again, I'll draw on my experience.
Yeah.
The company that I worked for bought Lions Ambulance, and we had a conversation with leadership here from the fire department, and we knew, given our staffing at that time, it wasn't a viable solution, and we wouldn't be doing any justice to the town of Essex responding from Danvers or wherever it may be. So it's not a, when I talk about this, I want to be very clear that I'm not specifying Bowport's capabilities. It's a nationwide problem that ambulance companies are having with staffing. You know, I think in Massachusetts, if you take a fictitious number of a million calls a day, right, or 100,000 calls a day, that we start out with, we probably have capacity for 750,000 of them. It's, or 700, wow, I'm doing my math wrong, but we start
75,000?
Yeah, there we go. So we start out with capacity of 75%, right? So it's an uphill battle, and it's a compounding issue. So if we take two ambulance resources out of this region, we're not only impacting Essex, which is obviously our area of focus, but we're impacting the areas around us that do rely on us at times for mutual aid. And I know mutual aid has been a bit of a topic. We have received mutual aid nine times this year, two of which were building fires or structure fires. I can assure you that the residents who own those two buildings were very grateful for the mutual aid that they received, as are the members of the department. We have provided mutual aid 19 times. We were canceled en route six of those times, so very minimal time on task. And then we had another, say, five times where it was a mutual aid call with the ambulance. So light at the end of the, you know, our light at the end of the tunnel is kind of, we're at least producing revenue during that time. So we are of our contiguous communities, probably the smaller call volume of all the communities around us, so it would stand to reason that we're going to be going out more than we're coming in, but the value when coming in is invaluable.
Just one other thing. In your email, you had talked about an idea that you had about a regional EMS model, and I know that you're drinking from the fire hose now, so it's not really something you have time to pull together, but it would be great to maybe think about what that looks like and what you would need to kind of explore that.
Yeah, time, but yeah, I think it's certainly an option. We do have fire-based services around us that could be utilized, and this isn't some revolutionary idea that I came up with. We've met a couple of years ago with Senator Tarr, and he was kind of pushing that same model, where, you know, how do we get fire-based resources to provide a service in a region?
So can I, you know, this all started because we're talking about having a full-time person to be a fire prevention, and I guess my question is, could that hold?
That's for you.
The seven?
I hope so.
Could that, could that position hold off until May? For a, you know, for the full, so the budget could be worked out and everything?
I mean, anything's possible, right? I think we've held off for years.
Yeah, and that's why I'm asking, because we, I've talked to, you know, a few of the fire people, and it's like, Alba, this is overdue by at least 10 years, and I get that. So that's why I, you know, I'm trying to just get an understanding, is it something that can hold off? Is it something that you feel, no, these are the things we're missing out on?
Yeah, I think we have a lot of good things happening right now within the department. We're building on momentum from years past, and we want to continue to build on that. The next logical step is adding that full-time person in, right? So, you know, I think the chief's position has been underwater from, you know, you come in every morning, you're like, well, what couple of things am I going to get done in my time? And you're not really driving anything forward, and it's not a shot at myself or a predecessor. It's simply, there's no bandwidth to do it. So you're one person working 10 to 20 hours a week, and you're trying to run a company, essentially, that has 40 to 50 employees that runs 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. So I think from a longevity standpoint, it would be much appreciated if we could do it in the fall meeting, because there's, I can point to a couple guys back there, there's a lot of sacrifice that goes into this, and it's not necessarily sustainable long-term. And yes, it seems petty to be arguing about a few months, but the reality is, it's going to take, we're now looking at July, right? So it's almost a year, where we could be looking at January, so.
And I guess the reason I'm even asking is just because it's not in the budget now. So we'd be taking from free cash or from whatever fund, and to fund this, and that, you know, it was hard for the finance committee to swallow, I think.
Yeah, and we can, again, we're
The town.
We're willing to be a good municipal citizen. We're happy to work with whomever, but I just don't want this to be one of those situations where we're kicking the can down the road, and then, you know what? It doesn't work in the spring, and then we're going again, because the secession plan is not great, so. No offense to them.
Okay. I'm going to ask for public comment on this subject, since we have such a roomful. I don't know if anybody from your department had something to say.
I'm good, ma'am.
You are good. They're telling you to go.
It sounds like the outsourcing of the ambulance service is a topic that's been put to bed, but I did write a public comment, so I'm going to read it anyway. Good evening. Tonight, you'll be discussing the possibility of outsourcing Essex's ambulance service. I want to strongly urge you not to take this step, and I'd like to highlight several key reasons why outsourcing would harm both our town and our residents. First, the Essex Fire Department already provides an outstanding level of service. While we are 100% call department, meaning our personnel respond from home or work rather than from the station, our response times are consistently in line, or even better than those of neighboring towns with a full-time department or private ambulance services. Currently, Essex operates a basic life support, BLS ambulance, and bills patients insurances for these services. This revenue doesn't just offset costs, it funds firefighter stipends and covers the full expense of purchasing new ambulances. If the town were to outsource, fire response costs would remain, but the revenue would vanish. Essex firefighters would still be dispatched to medical calls, they would still provide immediate care, and still stabilize patients, but the insurance reimbursement would go to a private company instead of back to our town. This means Essex taxpayers would be paying more for less. Second, outsourcing would not change the fact that Essex Fire and Police are first-on-scene. Our police department already responds, evaluates patients, and relays vital information to the fire department. Essex Fire provides immediately, immediate lifesaving interventions, CPR, Narcan, epinephrine, often within moments of a call. These seconds matter. They're the difference between life and death. We must ask, what would a dedicated private resource look like in Essex? Would the ambulance be housed in our fire station, as it is now? Or would it be based in another town? Would it truly be dedicated to Essex or shared across multiple communities? Just recently, I heard on the scanner that a resident began choking. Their spouse called 911. By chance, a call firefighter happened to be nearby and arrived within moments. He performed the Heimlich maneuver and saved the person's life. If that call had been left to a private ambulance responding from several towns away, that outcome could have been tragic. Finally, outsourcing does not reduce the need for Essex Fire to respond. It only strips away the funding that supports our local service. In effect, it would be a double loss. Essex taxpayers would continue to fund emergency response while handing valuable reimbursement revenue to a private company. I urge you not to privatize our ambulance service. Instead, stand with Essex EMS, support the Essex Fire Department, and most importantly, support our residents, who deserve the committed local 24/7/365 response that only our team can provide. Second public comment. This public comment is supporting the addition of a full-time firefighter. Tonight, I'm here to speak in support of the Essex Fire Department's request to hire the first full-time employee of the Essex Fire Department, a fire prevention officer. This request is not, this request is not made lightly. It represents a crucial next step for the success of Essex Fire. I understand, as I'm sure you do, that this decision carries financial considerations, not just salary, but benefits, pension, health insurance. The chief recognizes those concerns as well, and has shaped his request accordingly. Rather than asking for a full-time chief, which has been requested and denied in the past, he's putting forward a more cost-conscious option for a fire prevention officer. This role would cover administrative responsibilities, such as scheduling, payroll, training, inspections, and building permits, freeing up leadership to focus on operations while saving taxpayers the expense of a higher-level position. Essex Fire has asked for a full-time chief before, and those requests were postponed due to finances. Since then, we've seen turnover at the top, leaders moving on because the administrative burden cannot be managed without support from a full-time person. Chief Hassel has listened to the town's financial concerns and come back with a plan that is both responsible and forward-thinking. The Board of Engineers unanimously chose Chief Hassel to lead Essex Fire, and since his swearing-in, he's done an outstanding job. If your trusted department head tells you that this is what the department needs to move forward, I urge you to listen. Yes, there are questions to answer, whether to bring this request to Fall Town Meeting or annual, how salary and structure will be handled, whether it will be union or contract, but at the heart of it, the decision is about showing that the service of more than 40 dedicated members of Essex Fire is valued. Our firefighters don't serve for money, prestige, or recognition. They serve because they love this town. They take pride in their work, in their trucks, in their station, and in the safety of Essex. Supporting Chief Hassel's request is a way of showing that their dedication is respected. I ask you to support the addition of this full-time position. Doing so will strengthen the department, ensure its sustainability, and honor the commitment of those who serve. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you just tell me?
Ruth Perrin, 15 Lufkin Street.
Is this comment, is Ruth Perrin the resident, or Ruth Perrin on the financial committee?
Oh, sorry. Ruth Perrin, 15 Lufkin Street, as a resident. Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm just, is there anybody else in the room that wanted to say anything about this? Please?
My name's Peter Horr. For those of you who don't know me, 182 Southern Avenue. I'm a member of the fire department, but I'm not speaking as, I don't represent the fire department, but I just wanted to share some knowledge that I have. Those of you that may not know, I have a 25-year career in private EMS, prior to retiring and opening my doggy day business. I finished my career as a chief operating officer of a company that had 600 employees and over 100 ambulances. So in addition to that, I spent 10 years on the Board of Directors for the Massachusetts Ambulance Association. So I've been around the block in the private ambulance sector. I just want to stress the economics of considering privatizing in a town like Essex. With our call volume, we're not a lucrative target for a private company. So it would, it would be a double whammy financially. Say, I don't know the exact revenue that we generate now per year, so obviously, we'd lose that, but we would have to pay upwards, you know, when I retired in 2019, an ambulance staff 24/7 at the paramedic level was about $1 million a year. Basic life support was Basic life support was about $750. I'm sure those numbers have gone up substantially. So, for a company to do it, they would need a substantial subsidy from the town at great expense. So, I just want to make sure that you folks understand that it would be a significant financial swing there, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Dan Dusset, John Wazev, former chief. The reason Chief Hassel brought that position to you is because it's needed. 12 years ago, I asked for a chief's position. Oh, it'll be the next thing, before they hire a TPW guy. I heard that story. They hired two TPW guys. Well, it'll happen again before they hire a police officer. Same thing, they've hired a police officer. Part of the reason I left there, I loved that place, and I loved those guys, but I couldn't do it anymore. It's a time commitment, and without some internal, full-time staffing to manage that building, you're putting an un, really, the burden you're putting on the individual who's in charge is overwhelming. Just even responses to something like this over a unsigned letter, which I still don't know why the board even addressed it, he put a lot of extra work on his plate. So, it's always easy for people over here at Town Hall to ask for extra information, and I get it, you've got to verify what's going on, what the numbers say, but you have to also understand, without the resources, it's hard for the individuals to do such. So, you should support this position. It's been 12 years, 10 years, how many years? I don't remember. You know, being spoken about, and it keeps getting put off. It's like we did with the station, we kept putting it off. We need to stop kicking the can down the road and do it. Thank you.
Appreciate it. I am going to ask, is there anybody online that would like to have public comment? Going once? Going twice? Okay. I think we have information. Do either of you have any more questions?
No.
Did you?
No.
I guess the only thing that would be helpful
Mike?
Sorry. Is that, you know, we have this letter, which I don't like unsigned letters, I don't --
You shouldn't even take your data.
It is, I mean, we have it, so.
I think if anyone in the area did that, I think it's not the answer.
I'm sorry, do you mind?
So, I think
Anybody's going to respond to her, I need you to get up to the mic.
No, I mean, I agree with you. I don't like unsigned letters, but, you know, there's going to be questions at Town Meeting, whether we do it in the fall or the spring. And, you know, you and I have talked about data, and I know people hate that request, but the reality is, sometimes, when you just present the data, it's very convincing. And I think, you know, we've had conversations about the impact this has on your career. You know, you have to hold a job, you have to pay your mortgage, and you have a family, and it's like, I think we don't necessarily know what the impact is of the time that is spent, and it's not just you, it's other folks as well. Like, what is the impact on your business or on your family when you have this obligation? And I think it's important for people to see you as a full person who has a career and a family, and why this matters for our safety and for the future of the town. So, I know data, I hate that request, but it does speak to certain personalities that want to see that kind of data, and if you come with your full case, kind of like, lay it out there, it helps to kind of quell those, there are a lot of assumptions that came in that letter, and I don't know who saw the letter, but there are a lot of kind of anecdotal things that we kind of listen to sometimes at Town Meeting or in Dunkin' Donuts, but it helps to actually have the facts in front of us. So, you know, both you and Raimi have experience, and Dan, about what that's like, so I think it'd be good to present that.
Yeah, so I can certainly work on a dataset. I think that, you know, Town Meeting, it's tough to present data at a Town Meeting, but
But you could have it beforehand, right? You don't necessarily
And I think maybe, I'm certainly, I'm available at times, so, and I would like to, I think Dan spoke on it very well, and this position is incredibly important, and we are definitely at the point where we need it. So, if it's helpful to members of the community to be able to reach out to me, or I can set certain times to make myself available and just come into the Fire Department, I'm happy to post something on Facebook that would present some sort of schedule where folks can come in and ask questions, and I'm happy to share data. But I think, as far as understanding what the role is, it's, I mean, most days, I'm there at 6:00 AM, leave around 8-ish, if all goes well, go to work, and then either come back to the station and do some stuff in the evening. We have training two Thursdays a month, and then we have a company meeting as well. So, outside of those hours, there's obligation as well. There is regional meetings that need to be attended to as well, between Essex County Chiefs, Regional 911, REPC, safety meetings, community event planning, proactive fire prevention, the list is fairly endless. So, you know, when I do get home, it usually consists of looking at my emails, trying to get back to people, answering text messages. It is nothing different than Chief Reader or Chief Dusset did before me. It's, I mean, now I look at it, and I'm like, huh, no wonder Chief Reader never got back to me. He's sick of me texting him all the time, and he's trying to have a real life, so, and for the record, he did get back to me. It's a lot. It is never-ending, just like, you know, heaven forbid, you actually have a moment, that's usually when a call presents itself, and you're running out the door to do that. So, it is, it's difficult.
Some ideas for strategy would be, draw up some FAQs, maybe do some office hours, and they don't have to be staffed by you, because it seems like everybody in the department thinks it's a good idea. So, you have those FAQs, and when you have office hours, people can say, well, I never had a chance, they can't say, I never had a chance to ask my questions, because you've, you know, we did that for the school building projects, I think Lisa did a great job with the planning board. If you make yourselves available, the folks who write letters saying, this isn't real, had an opportunity to come and get their questions answered, and they didn't take it. So, just some ideas.
Yeah, absolutely.
Along those lines, how do you feel about that if the ducks aren't all in a row for the public, certainly decision-makers, it's much easier, but for the public to bring it to the Fall Town Meeting, and they don't have all the information that they should have, and then it gets shot down, and then, it's not the death knell for the position to bring it up at the Annual, but it makes it that much harder to accomplish. Something to consider, you know, and, you know, if you feel it would go through at Fall Town Meeting, then, you know, that's certainly the way it should go, but if you feel like it's not really ready yet for the public to digest, then maybe it's worth waiting. I don't know.
And one thing I just want to add to that, because one of the comments that came to me from somebody, is it going to cause a problem for the tanker truck? You know, which, is the tanker truck more important? Is the, you know, position, that's, I don't know how you feel.
Yeah, so I feel like we've been level-funded for about 10 years, and everything's coming to a head at once. We don't control when this stuff becomes, you know, comes to the warrant. Ultimately, the tanker truck is, you know, 30 years old. NFPA standard says 20 to 25 years. So, yeah, we were on borrowed time five years ago. I think there's opportunity to, you know, part of the five-year plan was trying to project out the age of our fleet, and kind of have real conversations about what that's going to look like long-term, and kind of what the next 20 to 30 years looks like, because we know the replacement schedule for those by and large, right? As far as Town Meeting goes, I think we've probably all been to enough Essex Town Meetings that there is two camps, and that we would probably pass a Town Meeting where we have a lot of folks in town who have no idea that when they call 911, I've got to, you know, stop making dinner and come in, or any one of the 20 people back there have to do the same exact thing. So, folks in town pay a lot for taxes, and this is the least we can do to assure a better response for them.
So, we did get a letter about the tanker truck as well, saying that it was, you just said it was 30 years old, and this letter, from Mr. Neal, had some details in it, and I wonder, you know, Ernie's on the Fire Department, he knows.
Yep.
Has he done an assessment? Is that written up, or?
He has not done an assessment. We did about $15,000-plus worth of work to it last year. Emergency response doesn't have the luxury of just kind of being like, we'll get it started eventually. I think if you're the resident who's calling, whether it be our ambulance, or tanker truck, or whatever, we don't have these pieces of equipment, because we like to spend $1 million out of whack. We have these pieces of equipment because they are vital to our role. If you live on Wood Drive, if you live on Conomo Point, you have no hydrants. So, a 21- to 2200-gallon water tanker is much-needed relief when you call in for a fire. We had a Wood Drive fire recently, when it was negative 150,000 degrees, and it didn't matter, right? You could have had five tanker trucks down there, as soon as the water came out of a hose or started moving down the road, it froze in place. There is plenty of pictures of us doing our best popsicle impressions. It is a needed piece of equipment. We have, just like we've talked about before, we have a change in the amount of brush fire situations that we have all over Cape Town. This year has actually been, we're not going to say it, it's been, and we need that, it's a crucial piece. There are tanker task forces set up throughout North Shore with multiple tankers that get called in to these larger-scale things. Even with that, they're still calling in other resources, right? So, the tanker's not the be-all, end-all, but we need the tanker for our in-town use. You know, Middleton, you look at Middleton, and there was multiple tankers there, they were doing helicopter drops, they were doing all sorts of stuff. So, it's an important piece of equipment to have, and it's important that it works, because quite frankly, it worked for a little while, and then it didn't work. And if we had gotten something in town, it would have been one less resource in the region, so.
Did you have more?
Nope, I'm done, sorry.
Happy to. Thank you.
That doesn't mean we will not ask you more questions after the meeting. Is there any other public comments in addition to the Fire Department? No?
Other than the Fire Department?
Other than the Fire Department comments? Okay. On that, we're going to move back to Brendan Sobicki's report, and we're going to talk about the preliminary Fall Meeting warrant.
So, at this point, I have it set up for the plan. Oh, wait.
We're just waiting. Fire Department's going home.
Everybody's going home, except us.
Okay, so I put together the draft preliminary Fall Town Meeting warrant. I have it currently set up so that Articles 1 through 12 would be the planning board articles, and I've listed the topics there that they expect to cover. Article 13 is then just moving into whether we want to expand the purposes of the administrative revolving funds, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Zoning Board of Appeals. And that's because these boards often collect money from an applicant, and it's better to collect that money and pay the newspaper, or pay for postage, or whatever have you, than it is to have a budget where you're tying up money, when you could just be taking the money in from the third party and then paying it out without tying up town money. The question is, should we expand it so that it could also be used for postage? And I think it's a reasonable request. Article 14 and 15
Can I just ask you a question about that? How come I don't see that on the fund balances? It's a revolving fund, so would it be in that?
They were just recently
Added.
Added. I think July 1st, it kicked off.
I see.
So, I don't think there's any reporting on it, and there's probably not much money in them.
And it would be in this list?
Yes.
Thank you, sorry. Okay.
This is actually, you know, making a change, tweaking it a little bit after it's pretty new. Articles 14 and 15, the board wanted me to carry these topics. One would be the possibility of creating a nominating committee for finance committee members. This is different than what we have had. So, up until September 3rd, it was the finance committee itself that would make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and selectmen would decide whether to appoint. On September 3rd, when we got the Office of the Attorney General's approval back of the new bylaw, it is now up to the moderator to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen, the selectmen would make the appointment. This idea, which was asked at the last meeting, would be, instead of any of that, would, you know, is there an idea to put together a nominating committee?
So, I am still firmly for that, but I'd like to hear what the other members feel.
Well, we voted to put it on the warrant at the last meeting, I think it was, right?
I just, I don't know the details, though. I mean, you said, put the topic on there, but you need to, if you're interested in that, you need to flesh out, what is this committee? Who's on it?
It needs to be broadened beyond the moderator.
Why? Most towns do the moderator.
Most towns?
Well, I think the more
I think 42%.
I think the more people that you have making recommendations, the more options you have, and the better off
And I'll go with your group's comments when, last year, about why they wanted to move it into the moderators. You felt that it wasn't open, it was a closed-door decision type of thing. How is having one person making, deciding from people who recommend them? I just
I would just say that you just had a considerable conversation at Town Meeting. The Town Meeting voted in a majority to do the moderator, and now, one person wrote a public comment, or wrote a letter, and the two of you, I don't see the overwhelming interest from other town members to do this. So, I would just say, you haven't even tried the new process. Is this really what you want to do in Fall Town Meeting, when you just had a significant conversation in the spring? And when you look at what we have on our plate for the fall, is this the fight you want to have? So
Rather have it now than at the Annual, and I think that, I mean, if it's a slam dunk, it's a slam dunk, and if that's how it goes, then that's how it goes. It shouldn't be a long conversation.
Really?
If that's what they want.
Okay.
But I continue, it was because it was, felt that the process wasn't open. How is this open, having one person say, yeah, Annie can do it, I think Annie can do it?
No, I think you have candidates that are brought forward. Did moderator interviews those folks, talks, and actually, our moderator is a former select person and a former chair of the FinCom, so I think he's very well-qualified.
We're looking at the person we have right now. That doesn't mean
Yep.
the moderator's going to be the same.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm just a little bit concerned about moving
And I would also say that we had a questionably, questionable process in June. I wrote up a number of notes about it, and I think, you know, you proposed And I, I think, you know, you proposed three people. I don't feel like that is, I don't think that that would be a good.
And I, I guess I don't understand why you don't think it would be good. For, for the chair of the board of selectmen, the chair of the FinCom and the moderator to interview those and then come to a consensus of which one to move forward.
Would that be, would that be the process? They would bring forward the committee to the, to the board of selectmen?
Yes.
Then to approve? Yeah, I'm, I'm still not in support of this, but you two are, so. So you should figure out what your nominating committee is.
Yeah, I am. And we'll let town meeting decide.
So at least two of you would like to see this developed further for the next time you see the warrant. And you would like me to list the chair of the selectmen, the chair of the finance committee and the moderator as the committee members.
That will do the interviewing and make the
So I'll put something together and then.
Recommendation to the board of selectmen.
Right. The other thing that came up is with respect to requiring, and I don't know whether this is any of the finance committee or all boards and committees, to have some kind of remote connection option. And I guess at its lowest, or lowest tech.
Yeah.
It could be just a speakerphone, correct?
Yeah.
I know, are you looking for finance committee only or all boards and committees?
I would love to have the finance committee. That would, that's my only priority at this point.
Finance committee, okay.
So can you help me understand why that's the priority and not any of the others? That CPC that decides where to put the money or the, I, I'm trying to understand.
You can expand. If you feel like everybody, it should apply to everybody, I'm happy for that. But finance committee right now, I think so. I think there's a lot of.
What does it look like?
What does it look like?
Yeah.
A Zoom call.
So.
Like what we're doing here.
Yeah, but this costs money.
Planning board's been doing it for years.
Somebody brings in their own laptop and sets it up?
Used to be. I think they have an account now.
Yes, that's what they do.
Yeah. So somebody would have.
Yeah, some of the smaller boards and committees, if you went with all boards and committees, wouldn't be able to do that. They might be able to open a speakerphone. My biggest concern is if it is a requirement of the local bylaw that you have to have a remote option. When technology fails, that means the meeting has to stop. Unless the bylaw covers that possibility as well. Right now, since it's not part of the open meeting law, if this were all to fail right now, the meeting could continue.
Can I say the other thing that, that is frustrating? Is that you will have people from the finance committee call into a meeting and it's still not open to the public. And I really don't like that.
That is, that is allowed.
I know that. I don't like it.
Yeah, so the, the concept though is since the finance committee or the, the other members who are not calling in are in a room somewhere and the public has the opportunity to come to that room and hear the in-person members and the person on the speaker, then they have the opportunity. Otherwise, the board or committee would have to publish that connection information in advance. And if they, if they didn't do that, if they don't do that, there's no way to allow the public in, but it's not a requirement under the state law currently.
So if you have to, if you have to allow remote access, do you have to keep a file and all that sort of stuff of the, the audio at least, or the audio and visual?
Not if you don't have, you, you'd have to specify in here because right now, state law doesn't require that. So you, you would customize this to what you thought would work if, if at least two of you are in favor of this. And we'd have to flesh it out and then have town council review it as well.
I will also say that right now, you've got finance committee meetings happening at 7:00 AM in the morning, 7:00 PM at night. There is no consistent
Well, they, they put together a calendar. The calendar's been updated, hasn't it? Didn't I hear it was done?
It's tomorrow night at 7 o'clock, but the last meeting was at 7:00, 7:00 in the morning. There's just no.
And they're gonna, I believe that that's what they're gonna try and do. And is Jody still on if she, no?
Yeah, she's still there.
She is.
Jody, is this gonna be consistent? You're gonna be switching it back and forth to try and have as many members available in the room?
Yes. We are proposing a calendar for the rest of the year, tomorrow night. It is difficult for some of our finance committee members to get there in the evening. And in order to have a forum, we thought that we could go back and forth between the 7:00 AM and the 7:00 PM. Especially during the budget season, if we want to have town employees come and discuss some of their budget requests. We felt it would be great for them if they could come in the morning instead of having to come back at night.
Okay, thank you, Jody. So I do think it concerns me that if the connection fails, then the meetings have to stop, regardless if it's.
Not if we say it doesn't, right?
So, well, if it says that, that there would be best efforts, but if it fails, the meeting could continue. I'm just thinking about things like that because something happens and now the business doesn't get done.
Right.
But yeah, you could write it any way you want.
I would say definitely if, if we're gonna keep this on the line item, that it would be written in. That if.
What?
That if we're gonna keep this on the fall town.
It doesn't terminate if the technology fails, for sure.
Is it something that you want me to flesh out more so you have an idea of it and you can look at it again?
That'd be great. Please.
Yeah, I'll go along with that.
All right, I'll do that. The next is the removal of the dirt pile, just the engineering for that, so it's the design of that project. Then we move into.
Didn't you say something about the new contractor for the, for the trash would be? Is that, is that what this is going to? That they would be giving us a proposal?
Uh, the new, it's a new engineering firm that they're using, Weston and Sampson. And they gave us a proposal already.
Oh, they did, okay.
And it was for the 40,000, I shared that with you. And that would be just to get it so that it can go out to bid. And we know that we've got everything, sampling, you know, permits, whatever it is.
And just in terms of the sampling, you know, there was a person on the finance committee who said, oh, you know, there's, there's ways of addressing this if it's not toxic or.
Right, if it doesn't go past a certain threshold, could it be actually spread on site?
Yep.
And he did look at the data that we do have from the past samples. And it didn't look very strong case for that. But what we would do is we would.
Meaning it was contaminated.
Right, contaminated too much. But what we would do is if you're gonna do this engineering study, you, you make sure that in their scope is the ability to study that as a possibility first. And then, then you go and design it as a truck off-site if not.
All right, thank you.
So that's what we would do. With respect to the Tobacco Lake ongoing research, that's just the town's second year of match. Hamilton will come up with 15,000 as well. And we already have been told that we're getting another state earmark.
So that hadn't disappeared?
Uh, no, it's been, we haven't gotten paperwork to actually enter into a contract yet. And I think there is a freeze on it, but I believe we'll be getting it. It normally takes into the fall, late into the fall. With respect to the boat that the selectmen authorized a grant application for, this would be a match to that of about $95,000, that would be Article 18. And hopefully we'll know about that even before the warrant is signed. If you don't get the grant, you don't.
Then you just pull it off?
That's right. You don't even have it on the warrant. If we get a signed warrant, but we get to town meeting and we know you didn't get it, you just indefinitely postpone it.
Okay, so I know there was a conversation about the boat itself and the one that they had looked at. And there were some questions about, can you do all the things you want to do with the boat? It was an expensive boat. Did you hear this, this conversation?
Yes, and we were told that it's a low draft boat and it's actually well-suited for use in the Essex River. You wouldn't necessarily, if you didn't have a grant involved, you wouldn't necessarily be purchasing a boat at that price point.
Yeah.
But the grant only allows certain types of boats and brands actually to be purchased. And it will cost you more than $95,000 if you're just gonna buy your own boat. And so that's why we settled on this, but.
Because we have to make the case.
Cause a 30-year boat, too.
You have to make the case at town meeting and I just.
That it's a worthy boat for the town, yeah.
Right, and you'd have, the case would be, we have this boat here that's failing and it's gonna cost us, what, you know, 150, 170 to replace that boat. Or you could have 95 for a better boat that's a 30-year boat.
Yeah.
That's the, that's what we'd have to say, but we don't know about that status of that yet. The next one is the, the tanker that's on there still. I assume you want to keep that on there?
So is that 500,000 with 100 from the vehicle fund?
600,000.
600.
And, yeah, with 100 of that coming from the vehicles fund.
Yeah, so it's really.
500 of free cash.
And there's no grant, oh, we did apply for grant?
For the tanker, we applied several times and we've never gotten it.
And even in spite of the, you know, Seth Moulton was here and getting some pictures.
Oh, yeah, and I even told him how much it would cost.
Yeah, and he, he did state at that meeting on the, that Monday that he's aware of it because of the fires and the chances of more and more. But what I was told also was the fact that 35% of the town would require the tanker truck because it doesn't have flowing water.
Yeah, but didn't, didn't, wasn't there a conversation about like, is there a regional?
Yeah, it's a regional asset, yeah.
Yeah, is there, right, is there a way of, I mean, maybe it's too late, but just hold on.
I'll check back in with, with his office anyway. Why not? Cause it was mentioned. Next article is a new fully equipped police vehicle. The police chief would like to see that because it continues on the replacement schedule that he set up when he, when he came in.
And that's what it, 70,000 fully loaded?
Yes.
So we can expect that every year we're gonna see, cause we used to have a program that did this every year. And how, I think we're, so we'll just start it now and then in terms of years ahead, what do you think you should build in in terms of like growth?
It's probably gonna go like 80, 90, 100.
You think that by 10,000?
Yeah.
It's crazy right now.
All right.
But he would like at least at this one.
And, and so, and it's, normally it's the fall town meeting that we do.
Yes.
The vehicles.
Yes.
I just feel it's hard where we had one last fall and then May, you know, and now we're having another.
Trying to get it reset so that it's not dealing with failed vehicles and.
Yeah.
I know, but it feels like also now you have four vehicles all within a year and a half of each other and is that gonna?
He's gonna have to get up and make the case. I mean, that's, that's his job, so. Town hall trim and siding, I took a look, I still haven't had a return call from the painting contractor that I reached out to. But I'm thinking that town hall is probably at least 10 years from the original renovation, which was 2017. So that'd be 2027. But I do want to mention that we have an issue with repaint necessary above the fire bays. You have that shingled area on the new building, it's peeling, it's not in warranty. And I think we should look at that because I, I can tell you that that's an issue.
Well, we have that money, don't we?
I'm sorry.
We do have that money, yes.
Building the safety building?
Yes.
Yeah.
That was one of the things we were looking at when we were looking at the roof and some of the caulking and different things. But that's really starting to run on us. The roof is not in a failed state, still, as far as we know, holding the way it was.
We don't need to go to our meeting for that money, do we?
No, that's a good point, because we did hold the project open. So let me look at, at that.
Cause I, I would love to see if we could get a painting contractor who can put the whole package together. Centennial, the Grove House here.
Well, if you're gonna do that, you need someone to do design. We already have design done on the.
To paint, you need design?
Yes, yes, because they have to look at the square footage, the product to be used. When someone bids on it, they have to know exactly what they're expected to do.
It's not some guy in dirty painter pants?
We have to, we have to go to public bid.
The new DPW director, right? Aren't we building that in?
When we go to, yeah, he'll paint. When we go to public bid, you have to have specifications for the bid.
So do you, you remember our school committee, we used to do a certain allocation every year of like $60,000 for small cap projects? And it would just be a bucket that would go to facilities, improvements, like whatever came up. Do you guys ever do that? Does it always have to be specific?
It's always been a specific project.
Does it have to be?
Doesn't have to be.
I mean, what, I mean, how would you feel about saying, okay, $40,000 or $20,000 for small projects like this?
Another reserve fund.
What would that be?
Right, the, the difference is this. The school committee has the ability to put together a budget and then move the money around any way they want. Town meeting has to, let's say you queued up a, an appropriation of $40,000. You would have to have every catchword available, right? Because if you went to spend it and the description of what you were spending it on didn't include that particular thing, then you couldn't do it.
Ah, okay.
So we always go for the.
Identified for, yeah, and that's why you have, okay. So, but you do have estimates in some of these things, so you could.
We have an estimate on the fire station because we, we had that, we looked at that and we had no bidders on it because it was bundled with the roof that no one wanted to touch. But we have design and we have a cost estimate on the fire station and we have funding, as Peter pointed out. So at this point, I think town hall should be not, it doesn't need to be on this town meeting. And I, I want to get more information on, but I, I don't think it's ready for that. It's just.
Especially if we don't have a bidder, you know, nobody responded, right? Nobody's answering the phone.
Nobody responded on the fire station one.
Oh, on the fire.
But they will if it's just a painting job.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which we can do outside of town meeting.
Yeah, I, I just feel like it's a small painting job and if we bundled the other two together with it, could it?
What are the other two? This isn't ready yet. That's my.
Centennial Grove.
Centennial, I mean, just the Grove Cottage.
Yep. But that's gonna take someone to assess it for rot, you know.
Yeah, millions.
You have rotten trim, do you have rotten siding, do you, you know, all that has to be assessed. You need an architect or an engineer to come in. You have to pay them to do an assessment, come up with the spec for the job and then put that out to bid. If you're interested in that, you could slide a, a thing in here that says, you know, money to assess the Grove Cottage needs.
Should we check with the EDC?
We can.
You know, is trying to make it so that people will want to rent there and it will be a funding source?
And the very next article is talking about not only the renovations on the cottage itself, but furnishings and fixtures.
I would like to see how much usage you get out of that before you.
Put more money into it.
Yeah.
So in other, in other words, see what kind of a rental season you can.
Furniture and stuff, you're saying, when somebody rents, have them bring in their own stuff.
Yeah, you can rent that stuff, yeah.
And see how often it's used to see if it's worth buying.
I mean, we're gonna have the HVAC for the, for the spring and next fall, right? So if it gets advertised as open and ready for business, see how many rentals you get and go from there.
And I, the, the concern for me about, you know, having furniture there, look at the picnic tables.
Yeah, right.
I'm not sure who brings the hammer with them, but there's holes in them.
The lighter.
Or the lighter.
It's charcoal things they put on, yeah.
On the tables?
Yeah. But, you know, we need, we need to assess, we need to preserve the cottage. I mean, we, we need to do that regardless of how many people are using it. We need to, you know, assess it for rot and paint it so we don't lose the asset.
And that's where, two things. One, I'd like it to be so that you look at and go, oh my God, this is the cutest place to have this blah, blah, blah shower. Versus I go, could somebody paint these?
Well, the garage too.
Yeah, and the garage.
Or tear the garage down.
It's used for storage.
It's good storage.
I was thinking we could see if there's an artist at the school that wants to go and paint a mural on the two pieces of plywood.
But as far as the warrant is concerned, do you want an assessment? Do you want an article for the assessment of the Grove Cottage and Garage?
I think we should.
Why don't you, I'd say tentative because when I look at, when I look at things like unsuitable soil pile for 40,000, I feel like is, is the Grove Cottage? No, I mean, I'm just saying, is. No, I mean, I'm just saying, is the Grove Cottage like a want or a need?
It's always going to be a want.
Yeah.
Always, you know?
Well, I'll take a look at it. I'll see what... I'll try to get an idea of what that would cost, an assessment, and I'll put a draft article in there.
And also, of course, right now, we're at twenty-seven.
We're already up to twenty-seven.
So, I mean, I... would it be one I'd say, let's drop it? And, you know, if something else come on? Because I don't even know if twenty-seven is going to be right.
Well, because I have other things that have come up since then.
Right.
Article twenty-two would be, how much do you put into the special purpose funds? The finance committee usually makes a recommendation, and sometimes it's not to put money in some of the funds at all.
Right.
The next one would come from the wastewater-free cash. It would be additional grinder pumps. The next one would be if the finance committee's reserve fund needs to be replenished. At this point, it may not be needed. Finance committee comes up with a recommendation on how much more to put in the OPEB trust fund. Article twenty-six, this is changing the wage and salary scale because bringing in a new superintendent, you might need to increase the upper end of that scale. And the fire pretend... fire... full-time fire prevention officer would be put here as well because that position doesn't exist. And in order to bring someone in, you need an entry in the wage and salary scale. You need a budget line for that, and you need a position description. One of the... two of those things are town meeting.
So does... as far as the position itself, we say yes or no to that? Or does that have to go on the warrant?
You... the personnel board outside of town meeting would say yes or no to the job description.
Okay, great.
The job description only. That could be done now or after town meeting. But town meeting has to weigh in on, do they want to fund the additional budget for the person? And do they want to change the wage and salary scale to allow you to pay the person an X amount of money? So those are two things that happen at town meeting. And if you look at the next article, this would be how you would amend the FY twenty-six budget. It's just numbered wrong. It should be Article twenty-seven. Harbor master wages. The harbor master is presently coming up with what he thinks is necessary to get through June thirtieth. The police vehicle maintenance and dues and memberships. He's come up with a number for that now. The superintendent's salary is probably going to be at ten to fifteen thousand dollars more than it's currently funded. We've discussed the... a new line item for the ClearGov budgeting software. The... let's see.
Can I ask you about this budgeting software? So currently, right now, is it being done like in Excel or it... Like, are we going to be able to move the data in to ClearGov so that this historical...
It's going to... yeah, we're going to do that.
Okay.
Part of that's six thousand, isn't it?
Right. For, I think, several fiscal years, not like forever. And then we're going to be able to have that system talk to the official accounting system back and forth as well. Then I have on here, if you're going to do the fire prevention officer, the money would be added here.
This is all Article twenty-six.
Well, what I lay... yeah, twenty-seven now, yeah.
Twenty-six, twenty.
Because I put two twenty-sixes. And then unpaid bills, we know we have some from last fiscal year. Now, with respect to new things that have come to my attention since I wrote this, the fire... the police chief is asking whether a revolving fund should be created to capture a fee that's charged if somebody wants a cruiser when a detail is being done. So sometimes a customer will say, I want an officer, but I also want a car with the lights, you know, because of the safety reasons. And there's a way for a fee to be charged for that cruiser if that cruiser is going to go on a detail over and above the rate for the police officer. And then that money would go into revolving fund, and that would be used for fuel and maintenance and repair of the vehicles.
So it would be just creating the revolving fund, no money attached?
Right, and then they would actually charge additional money to a detail that wants a cruiser to fill it up. And that money is then sitting there to help pay for...
Did he say what kind of money you can charge for that?
He's looking into it right now, but he wanted me to ask about the concept of it. Then the acceptance of Chapter one thirty-eight, Section twelve D. This is the law that allows someone to trade in a wine and malt-only license for an all-alcohol license. We originally thought, because the ABCC wrote their guidance to say that it was a board activity, that it was done. In fact, you voted to do it. But then we found out later, and they changed their guidance, that it actually takes town meeting to adopt it. So are you still of the same mind? Do you want an article for that? Or do you want to... it was one thing when you were just doing it as a board. Is it a different thing when you're, you know, bringing it to town meeting?
Do we need to do it now? I mean, is there urgency? I mean...
There's still two available licenses.
Right. But can we do it at annual?
Yeah, I mean, you could... I could just at least put it on the list for annual.
That's what I think also. If we had an issue... so right now...
Right now, if somebody wants one of those licenses, they would go through the full process, but they could get one of those licenses.
Yeah.
Yeah, I...
They can still get it. It's not... yeah.
Then there was a... there was talk about doing a sewer rate study. Well, I found that there's a grant available to fund a sewer rate study, so I don't think we need to have that on any list. I did reach out to the chairman of the Board of Public Works, and he hasn't gotten back to me yet. But I'm going to encourage them to apply for, I think it's an early October deadline, for a grant to do a sewer rate study. They're saying that they need to do that next...
What is that, like ten grand or something?
More like fifty.
Fifty, really?
But it doesn't need to be on the town meeting.
It does, or...
It doesn't. I'm going to encourage them to apply for the grant, right?
Yeah.
And then the harbor master has asked about changing the bylaw right now that sets the mooring fees, which hasn't been touched in many, many years, to at least increase the per-foot fees for moorings. He would like to go even a step further and go into a much more involved bylaw that talks about how you can charge money for people that have slips at private marinas, kind of a harbor use fee. That is all possible, but I don't know that it's something you're going to want to roll out between now and November. I think you might be able to get away with, we want to increase the fees that are already in there.
Yeah, because it's the end of the season.
The timing is, it's the end of the season, but if we voted for it, then it could be implemented next year.
Right.
If we wait till the May meeting, it's a... it would be a hundred and twenty, right?
Right, but I question as to... I question whether you can get all the other things that you think you want to do vetted properly between now and when you sign the warrant on October twentieth.
So this is a tax on the boater who keeps his boat in the marina?
The marina, whether it's valet service, a slip, person on a slip.
I don't know how I feel about that, especially since they didn't even get drenched.
Right, other communities do it.
Yeah.
But, like I say, to vet that properly between now and October twentieth, I don't think so, but...
I think in vetting it, we'd need to know, well, what is this money going to be used for? You know, because just because we put it in, if it...
It would all have to go to the waterways fund.
What's the... what's the per-foot mooring fee now?
I think it's six bucks or something.
So what's he thinking going up the...
I don't... he's looking at that. He's going to look at other communities. But my question is, are you at least open to a simple increase in what's there today?
Yes.
Okay.
When's the last time they increased it?
I was talking about that today. I don't recall... I don't recall it being on a...
Six months?
Six bucks. It's probably been a long...
I don't recall it being on a warrant since I've been town administrator.
Oh, really?
Twenty-five years.
Really?
That's twenty-five years. All right, so those are the additional things. Now, with respect to the other tiers, we did hear about the fire prevention officer. That was on second tier, but I did write a note on the warrant. I assume you... well, I don't want to assume anything. Are you going forward with that fire prevention officer for the fall town meeting? Or do you... or will you be able to tell me, say, next time?
I think next time I'll be able to tell you. I am concerned, however, at the same time. Having the support of the fire department coming in here, and none of them contradicted what Christian was, or, you know... I think that I am now a little bit more for it.
Well, I have a note on the warrant, as you saw, and if you're going to formalize it, let's try to do that by the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Then the harbor use fees was a thing on second tier, but we've just talked about that, and we're not going for that right now.
Yeah.
And then also, we talked about it earlier when Weston and Sampson was here, the funding for the design permitting and demolition of the tennis court fence. You left it on second tier last time. I need to know at this point whether you're going to advance that back onto the warrant or is it going to stay on a lower tier for now.
So they gave us a proposal for that, wasn't it?
They gave us a proposal. It was like eleven thousand, I think.
I thought it was sixteen thousand.
Something like that.
Eleven thousand and then a certain amount if they... when they actually went and did it.
Replacing it.
It was like eleven thousand to design the project, and I don't have it in front of me.
And they had to pay for it. They had to pay for the disposal of all of the materials, which is like the zinger.
Couldn't you just throw it in the recycling, metal recycling at the trailer station?
Here it is. I do have it in front of me. It's in the same folder.
And it does not impede the renovation of the tennis courts, correct?
No, it wouldn't. It wouldn't. So it's eleven thousand eight hundred for design... designs and permitting. It would be forty-four hundred for actually awarding and managing the project if you got construction money. So you wouldn't spend all sixteen thousand two hundred unless you actually at the annual town meeting got the money to do the dismantling, right?
Yeah, and this is...
So it's about an eleven...
Sign of getting rid of... you have to design how to get rid...
Yes, because of the permits that are required.
And this would be just to allow for more boat trailer parking. It's not like it's a, you know, a nuisance or a safety issue or anything like that.
It would include the removal of the berm so that the cars could go in and out.
Yeah.
The design would include that and the permitting for that.
But it's only for parking.
It's only for parking. So the question is, is it something you want on the warrant? Or is it... you just live with the fence the way it is?
Live with it.
Yeah, I think at that price, those things are going to have to be done if the project goes through.
And do it then, yeah.
Or if the project doesn't go through and it has to be taken down.
Yeah, right.
We'll know at that point.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, that's what I had on the warrant. Are there any other questions?
Add those three? Other... did we just decide three?
Yeah, they were. The revolving fund to capture the cruiser fee. ABCC will be in the spring. It would be then the...
Full-time fire prevention officer, right?
Well, it's...
Was that rolled into the...
Might be bumped up. I have a note for it, and then the only other one would have been the mooring fee increases.
Yeah, okay.
So if I looked at the numbers that you gave us for Article twenty-seven, which is all of those operating cost totals, that's a hundred and seventeen thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And...
And that's if it's... I said eighty thousand plus benefits.
Right.
Might be another set of health insurance benefits.
Yeah, so, yeah, can we get that adjusted, like, loaded?
Yeah, because the next thing is to understand what it is they're trying to put together and what really is the market going to pay for that particular type of job.
Yeah, and so that has implications for the spring, right? Because those costs come again, right?
Yes.
But a full year.
Right, this would be to get through June thirtieth.
Yeah.
This is just six months. This, you know, what we do in November would be six months until...
And then if it gets funded again in the next year's operating budget, it continues?
Yeah.
Anything else on this right now? Okay.
Just about the superintendent. Can we just talk about the DPW salary?
Yeah.
So I would like to see, as far as a max, I think one sixty is high. And, you know, and I do want to have this person doing some facility stuff because you can't do it all. And it's a good time to get somebody, you know, to start working on that. But up to a hundred and fifty even seems like the max that...
And you could look at that. It's going to come down to... that doesn't mean you're going to pay the person a hundred and sixty. It's mean... it means that if you get into a... If you get into a situation where this person's really good and they have three other offers, you don't have any more horsepower if you don't put it in the range. That's all I'm talking about.
No, exactly.
How often do you adjust the ranges? So say you say, okay, we want to do it at one fifty. How often do you revisit those so that you have...
Normally, it just gets... Cola gets put on the low and the high, and their whole range moves up by the cost of living.
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if you're like this, you're trying to get a new person in, somebody's leaving, and then you readjust.
Yeah, I think that's good as far as this position to have... Understand what the full cost is going to be.
Plus, these numbers are not going to be in the article. They're going to be in the motion. So you have all the way up until town meeting night to determine what you want to put in there and what you're going to read. We don't have to figure that out tonight, yeah.
Okay, I think we still have more work to do. And...
The final change order for the water filtration plant project.
So I enter a motion to ratify the chairman's signature of the final change order regarding the water filtration plant improvement project in the amount of six thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-six cents.
So moved... is this the end of it?
This is the end of it, and the reason for this final change order is the water department looked at how everything got laid out, and they said, can we adjust this? Can we do that? It wasn't part of the original design. So they asked for something. It got accommodated, and now... and we're still below budget.
Yeah.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
We tabled it. The MOU?
It's not ready. It's going to come back again, yes.
So we dealt with the letter, right?
Yep, and the selectmen's discussion about it. So now you're all the way to house numbering.
Consider sending a note with an upcoming tax bill providing information on the importance of requirement of house and business numbering. So just to let you know, the assessors' office had reached out to me very concerned about the fact that there's lots of houses that have no... We have a bylaw. We're actually supposed to be charging a fifty-dollar fee fine if they don't have a numbering on their house. One of the questions I did have for BC is the fact that the person said to me, well, I give them a copy of the bylaw. And what she was telling me is the bylaw says that it must be on the house, but if you have a long driveway, there should be a placard on, you know, at the street, but not the mailbox. And then I found something on the website that is... was from the fire and police, I believe, that says "on the mailbox." So I just want to make sure that, you know... So one of the things is I reached out to Brendan. I said, what can we do short money? What can we do, you know, just to remind everybody? So he did make the suggestion of putting it into the tax bill. We've seen that before. I think it's great. I do think, like, if I... my recommendation would be it would either be color so that they see that it's something different. I would... I said to him, I'd love to see a picture of a house with a number on it so that they understand what this thing is about because I know that there's many days I don't even open that bill for a couple of weeks, you know? days I don't even open that bill for a couple of weeks, you know, and then when I do-
In order to catch it for this cycle, I have to give the copy to Brooke tomorrow.
Oh, okay.
That's, you could, you could delay it for a quarter.
You also can use social media and you can use your report, you can use all of the, the-
Yeah, you don't have to do this, it's just-
Right.
-one thing that you could do.
Let's see if we just use social media and this, and the public safety guys can do that as well. Town clerk, you and your report that you send out, um, you still, I mean, can you do just a special email to the folks who subscribe to your-
Yes, yes.
Does that sound, I mean, that sounds like a good-
Yeah, good, good way to do it at first and if it doesn't, you know, if nothing happens, then-
Then you could look at this for the following quarter.
Yeah.
So let, I would say, let's think about doing it on the following quarter anyways. That way, we can put some time into it.
Mm-hmm.
So is it, is it required on the house or the mailbox?
On the house.
And then on some other thing out front, but-
But not, not the mailbox.
Well, we have to get to the bottom of exactly what they-
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Because what I found was something that was from the, um, it wasn't in the bylaw and it was like on a, I think probably fire or police, 'cause I remember when they did this a few years ago, they, a few, it could have been ten.
Just like my mailbox was on the other side of the street, in front of somebody else's house.
Yeah.
You know, which isn't gonna be helpful.
Yeah. That's probably why they say not the mailbox, all right?
So the tax bill itself, instead of having a separate mailer, can you just put like a text box that has it in different, like contrasting color so that you don't have to have the additional, like it prints out with the, or can you, is that-
I think you would have precious little space, uh, maybe one line, maybe a few words. I'm not sure, I could ask, but-
Yeah, I mean, if you could just insert a colored text box.
I don't know if you can.
I, I, if you could, then you, would that save the two hundred, I mean, I don't-
Because it may be a form that's already-
Yeah, it may be something you can't do, sorry. Or a sticker.
Yeah, it's all done by some other company, yeah.
It is, okay, sorry.
We don't do it.
And I don't know if you've ever looked, Mass has the requirements, what Massachusetts laws are. And they have a great little flyer, but it's a full sheet flyer.
Oh.
And I think that what-
You can't put something in a tax bill that would require the postage to go up. That's in the law. Which is why it would be limited to one-third of one sheet.
Yeah, that's fine, okay.
And, and I, again, with the, um, FinCom did, I don't know if it was last year or the year before, where it gave, you know, a website to go to and I, I think even that's good.
Yeah.
I, I mean-
Well, let's start with, with this other stuff and then we'll get other options for next quarter.
Great. Okay, so then the next one is, um, next item on the agenda is to review the recent landing of the helicopter on town-owned land at Canoma Point without first securing permission from the town. So I asked BC to put this on here because I just felt-
Who gives the permission?
The, the, well, for the land owned by the town, it would have to be the board of selectmen.
So the helicopter landed on town-owned property?
Yeah.
Yes.
So Canoma Point is all-
Where though?
Uh, out, out front, yeah, the fire lane that's between, like, one-twenty, one-thirty, somewhere around there.
An abazah. But you know where the fire lane is, what we discussed last year?
We have to paint the, yeah.
So landed in there, um-
Which isn't even a leasehold, right? That's purely town property.
Right.
And, um, my concern was the fact that, safety, I mean, nobody knew that this was happening. The video that you saw that was on social media, you saw people walking towards the helicopter. Well, those throw up a lot of dust and sand and dirt. The other thing that concerned me when I looked at the picture and I zoomed in a little bit, there's a propane tank at the, of one of the houses. I don't know what the other one, but the one you can see in the picture, I'm like, oh my god. So, um-
What was the purpose?
You know what? Nobody has gotten back to me, I have not gotten official confirmation of who owns it or what the call numbers, the tag numbers are, tail numbers, tail numbers. So there's not anything, but one of the things that I suggested to Brendan is, you know, if we all agree to send at least the Canoma Point commissioners, um, an email so that they can send it out to the residents and say, this is not acceptable.
You mean the association?
Association, sorry.
Somebody also emailed me about, um, air traffic over Essex and said that, no.
Oh, the airplanes.
Planes.
It wasn't me, right?
And I was like, no, but I was like, I don't know. I mean, I-
That's Logan, it depends on what runway they're using.
Well, so I will say, my first hang is, or fifteen years, I never heard as many airplanes as I hear now constantly.
They probably changed, maybe they're working on one of the runways.
And somebody complained about the noise, so then they moved them up our way.
Could be.
So.
Yeah, 'cause they were really loud over on the south shore.
So Brendan, can you just fix that?
No problem.
Call Sean Duffy.
Yeah.
Shoot them down.
So it is no, it is noise.
On the helicopter though, you want me to talk to the association, yes?
Please.
I will do that.
And one of the things that Brendan had said was that we wouldn't, you know, would we approve, he said, why would we approve something like that, that's crazy. Somebody wants to give us hundreds of thousands of dollars and maybe, but the other thing that I heard from the fire department is, they actually, when a med flight is coming in, they hose down the field to make sure-
Yeah, there's no dust.
And they cordon off, you know, to make sure that, you know, it's safe.
Is there ever an emergency need for a landing at Canoma Point? Would, would, you know, if there was a marine emergency, has it ever happened before? I mean, and is-
I'm not aware of them doing that, um, it's usually right here.
Yeah, yeah, but they've never, there would, they have no plan to use it now and, um, we wouldn't, it wouldn't be something we would have to look at just for the, for the emergency.
I could see it being, you know, if there was some sort of an accident where you couldn't move the person, you know?
But I, I think in the past, they put them on the boat, they brought them to the landing, they drive them over here.
Yeah.
But they give them plenty of, uh, warning as to when they're coming.
Yeah.
So that, you know, you can hose it down and cordon it off and all that.
Well, even if you were doing it now, you would, the emergency services would assemble to that spot.
Right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, next item is to consider a request from a resident to add parking, pro, stripes on the area of the driveway across from the shipyard tavern.
The driveway?
So-
What of the driveway?
On either side of it. So what's happening now is people are parking so tight up to the, to the actual driveway on either side of where it comes out to the street.
They can't get in.
They have to go out and around the vehicle and they're actually going out over the yellow line because they can't just make a cut or they're gonna hit the other car.
Yeah, yeah.
And so they asked, you know, is there something that could be done? Now, I know that at, at one point that the selectmen were in favor of striping out areas where you can't park. The issue though would be here, that if you allow that for one person's driveway, how would you not-
Do it for all of them.
Do it for everyone else.
Yeah.
That, um, that section of one thirty-three has been really busy, I mean, I don't know if you guys have driven by there sometimes when-
It's packed.
It's packed and it's a cluster, like, I, I don't know where every-
Parking lot is a mess.
Yeah, I don't know where everyone's, I don't think people are aware of where to park, it seems very confusing and I suspect that some patrons of the new restaurant may be parking in the lot belonging to another restaurant.
It's possible, yeah.
And, um, I wonder if this is a conversation, I mean, I, I think you should, we should stripe that, I think that that's fair for that resident to ask that, but I think they also, it'd be a good conversation to have with the business, the chamber folks about parking.
Is it, does it only happen during restaurant hours?
Yeah.
Because, you know, I mean, that restaurant may not, I mean, look at the brewery, remember the parking situation there for the first six months?
Yeah, it was crazy.
Now, you know, I mean, there's like two cars in it.
Yeah.
You know, so who knows? I mean, I don't know, striking, like Brendan said, now you've opened indoors parks, striping around everybody's driveway.
And I don't know that, I mean, because you have to pull out and take a, doesn't everybody have to do that? I mean, I know it's tight, like at church.
Yeah, it's tight, it's tight.
When church is on, it's gonna be that.
There's also, I believe, traffic standards that say if you're the person driving, you have to maintain so many feet from a driveway opening and it may even be in the bylaw. So there's an enforcement aspect to that as well.
Put a sign there, you know?
You know, in other places they do the, they just paint it red or yellow or something to say, hey-
Yellow curb.
Yeah, but this is granite, do you paint granite?
No.
Well, like you said, you-
But they say no parking here to the corner or here, whatever, you know?
Yeah, but if you have a succession of driveways-
You're not gonna have any spaces left.
Right.
Right.
I mean, do you, do you let the resident handle it on their own? Do they put a couple of cones out there? I don't know.
Can you do that on a state highway?
And it's a state highway too, so what do they do?
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything that we can officially-
Yeah, so maybe-
Recommend.
Tell them to go to the state.
What is the mass, can you talk to somebody there?
Didn't the letter say they went to the state?
What's that?
Can we ask DOT what they would recommend?
Well, they're gonna tell, I already tell you the answer. They're gonna say parking on a state highway is locally enforced. They only have one line for you.
Okay.
And so, you know, we could do education with the police department, that's probably a good, happy medium. Flyers, hey, when you come here, you can't park that close to a driveway or whatever they're gonna say.
Yeah.
And, and that would at least be some relief for the, hopefully for the, uh, resident.
I, I think it's probably, maybe not by a whole bunch, but it will lessen with summer, uh, with winter coming on, winter, with fall and winter coming on. But I think also the other thing is, is that maybe telling, um, recommending to the owner, please put on your website, there's parking behind the town hall, you know, so that it helps move. Um, tell them there's a great wab, they can see-
I mean, I think we can offer that the police department is gonna try to do an educational campaign.
Okay.
As, so it's something, right? And not nothing.
Yeah.
So I'll try that and see how it goes, then I'm sure they'll let us know how it goes.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so consider a letter of, uh, the next item is consider a letter of support for an act to reduce incidence of death from pancreatic cancer in the state legislature. Um, so we did reach out to the board of health just to get an idea of what they thought. I think you were all CC'd on that response.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I, 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 do you see any reason why we wouldn't support this?
No, I don't.
So, um, do I just take a motion then to?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, taking a motion to, unless either of you have comments.
Nope.
Take a motion to support, um, the letter for an act to reduce incidence of death from pancreatic cancer.
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? I'll have to come back tomorrow.
It's here.
Okay, um, next item is to ratify the town administrator's sign-off on a building permit for the roof replacement at eleven Middle Road.
So when we do things like windows and roofs, it's usually at my level to keep it moving.
So moved.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Um, signature of cover letters offering leases for northern Canoma Point, Robins Island. So I'm gonna entertain a motion to, um, sign the, the cover letters for offering, offering lease for Canoma Point, Robins Island, Beach Circle as follows.
And, well, you can say as listed on the agenda. I can explain though-
As listed on the agenda.
For your new member, I can explain what this is.
Second.
All those in favor?
We're gonna do a discussion though, right?
So, um, the majority of leases on Canoma Point, you know, the town sold about two-thirds of the properties, there's about one-third left. The majority of those are twenty-year leases and so you, you don't, the next time that comes up is twenty thirty-six, I believe.
Mm-hmm.
And those are for people with a lot that has a residence on it. But the board, when this, uh, when the, the latest, um, group of twenty-year leases were considered, the board said for a bunch of other situations, it would be to the town's benefit to go year to year. Because if Canoma Point, the needs, public access needs at Canoma Point change over time, some of these situations don't necessarily need to remain there. So we have things like accessory lot that is on, on a town, a town-owned, uh, there's a town-owned lot without any building at all, it's just a vacant lot next to somebody's residence. Um, an accessory lot with, uh, with a building on it, a, uh, a one-year lease for a, with a, with a dwelling on it is a special case. So ev- every one of the ones that has a town-owned lot with a dwelling on it is twenty years except this one. Because this one at eleven Beach Circle, um, happens to be next to a couple of other lots that the town, if we ever wanted to expand public access at Beach Circle, clamors beach, you would not renew that lease. Uh, category eight, Robins Island, there's a couple of, um, lots across the street from lots with residences on them that, um, are year to year as well. And they have garages on them serving those residences. Category ten, um, the person doesn't actually have a primary dwelling on Canoma Point, but they happen to be leasing a lot with an outbuilding on it. So they, they're not even affiliated with being a resident out there. And again, um-
And, and these all come with, they, they're paying a fee or not paying?
Oh, yeah. I mean, that's all been decided and it goes up by the, uh, consumer price index. The only difference is it's year to year and not twenty years at a time.
So, what is the value of this asset, uh, in total? Do we have, like, when do you do value assessments on this, the property?
Well, they have to pay the full tax value as if it was a year-round property.
Mm-hmm.
And that is, the assessors, they're constantly updating what waterfront property is worth.
Yeah.
That's separate from the lease that they pay.
Yeah.
That is based, that was based on something that got, um, put in place, I think, twenty-seventeen and, um, it goes up by the consumer price index and in some recent years it's been higher as like five percent.
Yeah.
And that keeps going on, it's compounded. Like I said, so value of the property itself-
I could just go on the assessor's site and look at each-
Yes.
Lot and see what the value of that is.
Oh, the lot is, the lot with the structure, exactly, yeah. And that's continually reassessed like any other property in, in the town.
And just one other, like, question about that. How do you quantify or use your, I mean, I know there are buildings on them now and they're, they're leased, but how do you, can you use the value of that in any, in any way or does it have a, is it a factor in anything? Do you see what I mean? Like, we have, you know, our reserve funds and-
Asset?
Yeah, like, is there an asset column that, that you would ever use for anything? I, I know that sounds like a really quick one.
If there's one-year leases because these all have, well, some of them were set up that way, but they're, they have value as Brendan said.
I mean, town, the, the, we do keep track of the town's capital assets and that would be in there.
It's in that bucket.
But it's not, it's not liquid, right?
Yeah, right. I'm just-
I can get you that report, I'll get you the report on-
Do you see where I'm going with this?[1709.83] But do you see where I'm going with this? I'm just trying to see, what, how, can you leverage that asset at all, even though it's, it's encumbered or whatever it is? I'm just...
And, and again, but like, for bond rating, or for what?
I don't know, I don't know.
For bond rating, yes, but...
The thing is, is that...
Twenty, you're stuck for 20 years for most of them.
Yeah, but, but, but if you needed to.
Right.
'Cause somebody said to me once, well, you could just, you could just sell what you wanted to sell, and I was like, ooh, you know, that's very controversial, but, um, but I'm just, I just wonder, that's all.
Can you, can you sell those if, if we decided we want to sell them, or if some of them?
At the end of the 20 years, yeah.
No, not, not during it? No, sell it to them.
That is probably in there, but if you're gonna sell it to a developer or for other purposes, I believe there is, yeah.
Okay, sorry, thank you.
Okay, moving on to licensing.
The items.
Oh, sorry, items, um, not anticipated.
I don't have any additional items, no.
Thank you, Peter. Um, so licensing, antique license. We have Diamonds in Rust, um, is it Janelle Bannon, 2 Martin Street?
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um, okay, so then we have, um, a, entertaining a motion for wine and malt. Uh, we have the Coastal Mass Brewing for, um, Cox Reservation on the September 20th, uh, 11:30 to 2:30. I'm just gonna read the others. Um, Diamonds in Rust, Janelle Bannon for the Sunday, September 13th, from 11 to 6.
These are all inside?
Um, Cox Reservation is the bike ride, which one, which?
Is that inside? It, it, what is it?
Tent, uh, Cox Reservation.
Okay.
Um, and this is just, and, yeah, just a...
So these are two that we can act on, right?
These are two we can act on.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So the last one, um, this is being tabled, it is the, um, there was a request for a one-day license, multiple...
Several one-day licenses, but it's our position that that particular establishment, if the events that they're interested in doing are all inside the river's bend, there's already a permanent license there. Yes, there's an application pending to change the, uh, owner of that license, but the, until that happens, the existing license is, is still fully, uh, in place. So there's no need to grant those.
Okay, thank you. Um, then the personnel board regarding the, um, the superintendent of public works, um, I read over, it looks like it, they did the changes that we asked for, or the additions that we asked for.
Were there any additional changes from, on their part?
No.
Did we see any? No.
No.
As, as we, as we report, as we reviewed last time, it's the same.
Yeah.
Uh, so moved? Oh, sorry.
Do we have to, motion, we, we don't?
Yeah, you're the personnel board, you have to approve the position description.
Okay, so, the, um, I'm making a, an, entertaining a motion to accept the, um, the job description, um, that was revised for the superintendent of public works position, um, in description.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now, with respect to executive session, um, we did not hear back from ASME with respect to their take on what you were gonna talk about, so I don't know whether you want to go into executive session without having that confirmation.
Probably not.
What do you recommend?
Uh, no, 'cause we had asked them to please have something to us by last Thursday so that we could make sure it was on the agenda, um...
Did they respond to that? Like, yes, we will, and just didn't?
Yeah, they didn't.
In the room, they said, we can definitely do that. They said they had to poll their membership.
Yeah.
And...
So they didn't do that yet?
They didn't do it yet, so, you know, it can be brought up at the, at the next meeting. Um, they're gonna obviously want, if you get, if you get a contract, um, in time to sign the warrant, they're gonna ask for that to be put on the warrant for the retroactive pay.
Do you have the ten, I'm sorry that I don't remember, do you have the tentative line item for that on the warrant?
Not as yet, but it will, it will be something I'll add. I, I was hoping to have more information on it tonight, but don't have it, so...
So it's important for those folks to understand that if they don't get back to you in a timely manner, then we can't address this at the fall town meeting.
That's right.
So one would be ideally this week.
Yeah, so that...
Yes.
So that at your next meeting, you're very clear on what, what they, you know, what their proposal is, and you can talk about it in executive session next time, which is just enough time to get it put together.
But, I guess the question...
The next meeting, on the 22nd.
When do we have to have the warrant finished?
October 20th, is you, is you gonna sign it, at the, at the latest.
So if we have a problem with anything...
On September 22nd, you have one more chance.
Yeah, so I mean, it's imperative that
Yes.
these folks get back to us in a timely...
Yes, and we told them that, but...
Yeah, we, I mean, so we sat in the room, it's, it's only six of us.
Yeah.
The mediator that, you know, um, and so we did, both Beezy and Jody said, we really need it ahead of time to be able to make sure it can be voted on the 8th.
Yeah.
So, um, I'm kinda, I, I mean, I walked in today, I said, did we not get anything? So, we didn't.
Yeah. And I know you want to address their concerns and make sure that they have contracts.
Yeah, if their membership has to be polled, then we're talking to you tonight about things that we're not even sure they're accepting, accepting of, so...
Oh, right, yeah. Oh, I forgot about that.
So, um, and Brendan did put a lot of stuff together, which I think is great, so if they do come with us, what we believe we agreed to, um...